Today's special meeting.
Good afternoon, let's start the afternoon session. There will be three sessions leading us to six fifty-five. This is to that the estimate of twenty twenty and twenty-one to ensure that the amount asked for will not be, will not exceed what they require. If members would like to follow up on government's reply, please assign the reply number on the top right corner. If you're not happy with the answers of the administration, you can follow up afterwards. I will decide on the speaking time after taking into account the number of members who would like to speak. Let's welcome Mr. Young, the secretary, and his team. Those who would like to ask questions, please press the button. Now let's hear from the secretary. Thank you. Chairman, the Innovation and Technology Bureau, through different measures in the past year, continued to perfect the innovation and technology ecosystem in Hong Kong on the one hand, and stepped up effort and support for the industry to cope with the volatile environment on the other. The financial secretary has announced in the twenty twenty and twenty-one budget, various new and enhanced measures. I will give a brief overview as follows. Firstly, the budget has announced to earmark three billion dollars for phase two of the Science Park Expansion Program. To respond to the keen local demand for research and development facilities, Science and Technology Parks Corporation has commissioned our consultant to conduct a master planning study on the expansion of the Science Park to explore onsite and offsite development options. Upon completion of the relevant studies, we will consult the Ledgeco Panel on Commerce in Industry on the specific proposal and financial arrangement of the Expansion Program and seek funding approval. Also, the government has announced to set aside forty million dollars to subsidize local internships for undergraduates and postgraduates taking STEM programs in local universities. Through the STEM internship scheme, we hope to encourage STEM students to gain IT-related work experience during their studies and to develop an interest in pursuing a career in I N T after graduation, so as to enlarge the local talent pool. We're drawing up the details of the scheme and consulting relevant universities on operational matters. We'll consult the CNI Panel in due course with a view to launch the scheme within twenty twenty. Besides, the budget has announced to further enhance some existing funding schemes. We have since the first of April raised the government's funding ratio under the Technology Voucher Scheme from two-thirds to three-quarters, and increased the funding ceiling and maximum number of projects per applicant to six hundred thousand dollars and six. We believe that these would encourage local enterprises to undertake more and larger-scale projects for using technologies to improve productivity and to upgrade and transform. We'll also consolidate the research program and postdoctoral hub starting from July this year to allow for more flexibility for eligible institutions in engaging R and D talent. Indeed, in past few months, our bureau has introduced enhancements to a number of funding schemes thereby allowing more companies to benefit from our support and enabling companies to commence projects with sufficient funds. The enhancement measures include expanding the applicable technology areas and coverage under the Technology Talent Admission Scheme, extending the funding scope of the Public Sector Trust Scheme, the Postdoctoral Hub and Research Program, as well as enabling advanced disbursement of partial funding for enterprise support scheme, reindustrialization and technology training program, and the patent application grant, as well as the I T V P Technology Voucher Program. As the F S S S said, there is still some way to go to develop IT into mature industries. In the coming year, my colleagues and I will continue to work hard to foster I N T development in Hong Kong. Apart from implementing the initiatives and proposals put forward, our key tasks include, first, to release the Smart City Blueprint for Hong Kong two point O within this year to update the latest progress of various initiatives and set out new proposals. Second, to launch the electronic identity platform currently named as I Am Smart and the Next Generation Government Cloud and Big Data Analytics Platform in the second half of the year. Third, to continue taking forward I N T infrastructure projects, especially the Hong Kong Shenzhen Innovation and Technology Park in the Loop, Cyberport Five, InnoCell and Data Technology Hub and the Advanced Manufacturing Center. Fourth, to press ahead with the establishment of two inner-Hong Kong research clusters with a view to progressively setting up the first batch of R and D laboratories this year, thereby promoting R and D collaboration between top local and overseas researchers. Fifth, to launch the reindustrialization funding scheme and develop a microelectronics center for promoting reindustrialization. Sixth, to organize the first City I N T Grand Challenge to drive the I N T atmosphere. Seventh, to continue actively participating in the development of an international I N T hub in the Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau Greater Bay Area, creating a broader arena for the E sector. At present, Hong Kong is still going through the difficult epidemic. We will work with the I N T sector, continue to make use of local technologies to contribute to the epidemic fight. On this occasion, I'd like to thank members for the support and valuable comments all along on I N T development. Our members and the public will continue to support the work of the bureau. Thank you. Now it's question time for members. I think for members who have pressed the button, each can have five minutes. Let's start with Ms. Selina Wong. I'd like to hear more from the secretary how he leads the development of reindustrialization. We see that after the outbreak of Wuhan pneumonia, antiepidemic resources is in short supply because of a lack of a local industry support. We have to start from scratch. We have to find plant, find machinery, find material and find investors all the way from goggles, masks and to P P E. We have been relying on external supply. As soon as the supply stops, we are ground to a, we have ground to a halt. So how do you lead the reindustrialization to ensure that Hong Kong people will be given the priority and our industries will be given priority to produce resources we need? There are two parts to the question. First is reindustrialization. The second part is the fight against the epidemic. We can use local technologies to meet what we need. The shortage in masks is a global problem. Local production of masks started from zero to one. So we have already taken the first step. Hong Kong market will see a steady supply of locally-produced masks. Ms. Wong also mentioned about the focus of the reindustrialization. Yes, we do need local production. But we have to also select industries for focused development. They have to involve high-value, high-technology. They do not need too much learn and abide by the principle of local application to benefit people in Hong Kong. Listening to the secretary, you talk about high-value adding. You have to use a lot of machine machinery and not labor-intensive. We're talking about strategic commodities, masks and protective gear. Masks may not be high-value adding, so you simply rely on procurement? But no, you talk about reindustrialization. So what I said, apply, applies. And I have already answered that the local production of masks might have started late, but it has caught up. We have high-quality local masks production in progress. Do you know that there is a face shield developed and designed by the Polytechnic University? They can't find investors in Hong Kong and it can't be produced locally, so it has to be produced on the mainland. If we don't have reindustrialization, that means we can't produce what we have developed here. We rely on others to produce for them and that will be a gap in the supply chain. Do we have to rely on local production for everything? Say food? I do think that when it comes to life and limb, local production is important. If you can't ensure that takes place in Hong Kong, you have not done your job. Well, a lot of these items, say the smart wristband is produced locally. Using the technology itself is a tool to fight the epidemic. We rely actually on people to fight the epidemic.
Ms. Claudia Mill, thank you. Of course. We all see that the government has made appalling amount of money for I N T development. No, I'm not against that. Because we want to build up a smart city, we have to catch up with the tide and I think this is, of course, necessary. And I think the IT sector is most happy with your Technology Voucher Program. They say that is of tremendous help. But obviously, the I N T Bureau plans to build a Smart City Blueprint two point O. This is a very ambitious scheme and I think the blueprint is project-based. Your bureau has got huge funding and I would like to know how you operate under, in three different aspects. Earlier on, not now. When it comes to quarantine, I want to ask about the issues of wristbands. If I remember correctly, two-thirds of them did not work. They could not link up with the pairing smartphones. Now, secretary, you are supposed to help. It's your responsibility. Secondly, court trials. Because there was a general adjourned period in our courts and now there is also video trials. Have you ever provided assistance to our courts? You should have set up the infrastructure for them earlier on. Because for people who are being reminded, they have to stay on remand because the courts cannot operate. But of course, that's not your business, but you should help the courts. Lastly, all right. Let me please clarify whether the wristbands can now work a hundred percent. And Zoom, that was developed by mainland scientists. Now, universities, including myself, are using Zoom to deliver lessons. However, it's heard that the data were routed through Beijing. So should you give advice to the education sector as to whether Zoom should be used? If yes, what are the points to note? I understand that many secondary schools and even primary schools are using Zoom. How come you have been silent on this point? I will give the floor to the P S. But on the question of wristbands, I think the message was wrong. And as for video conferencing trials, they have already got that there is no need for I N T Bureau to help. No, the legal sector said that is very troublesome. No, in a recent trial, the cost was only eight thousand dollars. And the P S can talk about the wristbands. At first, two-thirds of the wristbands did not work and you said that it was a wrong message. So what's the correct one? P S, thank you, Ms. Mo, for your question. First, on quarantine arrangements. Starting from the first, the fourth of February, we had the first quarantine arrangements. We were in Russia and we were still in the middle of the Chinese New Year vacation. I ask for members' understanding, of course. We want things to be perfect, but we do have constraints. And the scope of quarantine was subsequently expanded and with limited resources available, we tried to do what we can. Now, whether we're talking about the electronic wristbands or the Q R code wristbands used for a short while in the interim? Most of them did work. So two-thirds of them did not work was wrong. So what is the correct percentage? Over ninety-nine percent of them could work. But for that Q R wristband, because all of a sudden there were too many returnees to Hong Kong and they had to download the apps. We had to send them the S M S because there were too many returnees. We could not send the S M S in time and then the airport was also very crowded. We wanted to spaze the crowd as soon as possible. So they figured that two-thirds of them could not work was wrong. Because there were too many returnees, when a few flights arrived at the same time, we're handling six to seven thousand travelers per day, not to mention returnees from other border points. So we sorted it out subsequently. So over ninety-nine percent of the wristbands were okay. For those with problems, we resolved them at once or we went to their place to give them new ones. But assume, can you please be brief? Within the government, we've issued notice, measures to take if Zoom has to be used. And then we've also issued guidelines for primary and secondary schools to advise someone how to conduct a video lessons. Now, let me read out the names. Kwong Chuen Yu, K K Kwok Loai Kwok, Peter Mock Charles, Peter Mock, Hoden Chow, Chang Chung Tai, Elizabeth Kwat, Chen Chi Chin and Wilson Oh. All right, Mr. Kwong Chuen Yu.
Thank you, Chairman. Previously, F S said that ten thousand dollars would be handed out to everyone in Hong Kong and we asked whether it could be expedited. Now, when it comes to I N T, I'd like to know how the secretary can help. About a month ago, we told the F P S could be used. I'd like to know the progress. Mr. Young, for details, I'll ask C G C I O to answer. But we are giving them all the support they need. Processes that would have taken longer have been shortened without help. And I think the details will have to be referred to the relevant bureau for reply. But when it comes to the procedures, yes, we have assisted to shorten them. I have to be very meticulous because many people are asking whether information technology can contribute here. So for the disbursement of ten thousand dollars to residents, will you be using the old method or information technology? For sure, I N T can contribute. Well, last time, are you referring to the handout of cash last time? Well, we could, a month ago, you said that F P S could be used quite confidently. Now, that day at a program with Mr. Chen Chi Wan, I made myself very clear. I said online banking for sure would be very expeditious and that was agreed. And it depends on whether members of the public would like to use online banking. And if you have F P S, so from account-to-account transfer, for sure, it is very quick. F P S is a tool. And as for disbursement of cash, I think the F S and T B has made very clear. Before the stage of handing out the cash, there are other steps to follow or to go through and I N T Bureau can help. But you were very confident in saying that F P S could be used to hand out ten thousand dollars. I only talked about the merits of using F P S and I hope that many residents can use F P S. You can double-check what I said. All right, I will contact Mr. Chen Chi Wan. All right, ten thousand dollars. I N T can help, all right? The secretary said that I N T can help, so let's wait and see. Now, recently, it's been reported that you have a nickname and visiting, a frequent visitor to the mainland. Ten visits to the mainland, only one to the U S and Canada. So you said that you could help to attract mainland enterprises to come to Hong Kong. All right, since we have given you so much financial resources, then handing out cash needs your help. Recently, Hong Kong opinion poll result came out and that you were, you are the secretary with the greatest fall in popularity or in rating. So how much have you done in attracting enterprises to Hong Kong in your duty visits? And I B B O three eight, your annual monument amounts to four point one five million dollars. Do you think it's ready for money to employ you? Well, I'm not going to answer the second question. And for the first, I think you have made a very bold assumption. You think that in my main visits, I will only be seeing mainland enterprises. No, you're wrong. When I visited mainland, I met foreign companies as well. True, in Hong Kong, I've also come across many foreign companies. Whether I'm in Hong Kong in the mainland, I promote I N T of Hong Kong. Your assumption is that when I visited the mainland, I could not sell Hong Kong to other, to other countries. Well, in my last visit, I made a six-day trip and on average, I had three to four meetings a day. During that six days, I had more than a dozen meetings. And for a visit to the mainland, many of them were day trips to attend meetings. You should not just look at the number of visits or the days of visits in assessing the depth and also the effectiveness of my work. Dr. K K Kwok, Mr. Young, your popularity has dropped. And for the two officials that have risen in popularity, there are Carrie Lam and John Lee and they are the most detestable officials in Hong Kong. So I'd like to ask how come your ratings dropped? Now, you have a lot of grievances. It appears that the wristband has nothing to do with you and the technology itself is okay. Rather, it's only the officials who ask people to use it that are idiotic. They didn't know how to tell the returnees to use it and how to activate it. So some civil servants are stupid, but not from your bureau, I heard very clearly. So in twenty eleven, John Zhang handed out six thousand dollars in cash and he spent about two hundred and ten million dollars. But for ten thousand dollars this time, the cost will be one billion dollars. And James Liu said that it has got nothing to do with him and he said that we should ask I N T. All right, one billion dollars. Is it your business? Is it because your I N T is in a mess? As a result, we have to spend one billion dollars? You know, I want the government to be open and transparent. In Order Report Number sixty-one, there were a lot of criticisms on the I N T funds we have in Hong Kong. And then you said there's none of your making. Now, Cyberport is now a proper development project and for Science Park, according to reports, many companies are there because of cheap rent. If you have a ten-year lease, you pay lower rent and some don't even have to pay rent for ten years. Oriental Overseas rented the premises at very low rent to place the I N T of its ship, of its fleet. And Advanced Analogic Technology, now this company, now this company has winded up. So the lease, it was for ten years and the size involved is fourteen thousand odd square meters, but now it has closed. And for InnoCell, they are mostly taken up as accommodation by mainland, by mainland students. There is another item with a strange name. You're going to throw in twenty-two billion dollars. In addition to that, there is the Lock Ma Chow Loop. Another hundreds of billions of dollars will be put into it. It's under the tag Innovation and Technology. Reality is Hong Kong people feel nothing about it. Youngsters say that there are no opportunities in innovation and technology sector. The wristbands don't work. And if they want to get cash handed out from the government, they will have to wait for months and months. You say that, well, you can rely on innovation and technology, but now you say that the bureau has nothing to do with it. Then whose purview is it under? Did someone put you in, put you on the spot? To just, did someone just ask, just let Carrie Lam and John Lee to claim the glory? Well, in relation to the smart wristband, I have been following it every day. I know the situation. You can say whatever you want, but I have never said that wristband is nothing to do with us. For the one billion dollars, well, we use our resources to help other bureau. We have never asked for anything from others. But the one billion dollars is nothing to do with you? That's right. We use our resources to help other bureau. Do you think that the one billion dollars is going down the drain? It's nothing to do with them. Then I asked James Lau. James Lau said that I should direct the question at you and now you say that I should ask James Lau. I'm just telling you the truth. We use our own resources. We have not asked for any money from other government departments. Well, then, we have no idea. Is he said, you said? Well, you mentioned it. I don't know anything about it. For the low rent in Cyberport, I asked you to go and visit Cyberport. One thing stands out at the Cyberport. It is the largest fintech cluster in Asia. Over three hundred of them in Cyberport is the first in Asia. If this is not innovation and technology, then I don't know what is. I'd like to uh clear the name for thousands of um startups in Hong Kong. In the past of four, five years, they have always seen a double digit growth. For the venture fund. In the past four to five years, there has been an increase by about twenty folds. You can refer to the figures and then you will know that Hong Kong people can do it. You have seriously overrun, next Mister Lo Wei Quo. Thank you.
First, I'd like to ask something about one seven five. It's mainly about electronic government service, the resources put in as well as its development. Given the epidemic, we see that it just the extent of the um digitalization is not enough. Regarding Smart Government Innovation Lab. A lot of times spent on. A lot of um time is spent on going through the uh process and the procedure. Is reply one seventy. In the reply. It says that in relation to uh approval of um building plans in February twenty nineteen. The Buildings Department has obtained two hundred and ten million dollars. To use government cloud for electronics submission. It's called Electronic Submission Hub, it's a good thing. Well, it's highlighted by the epidemic. We hope that the work uh will go electronic. Well, in the first quarter of twenty twenty, they will by phases allow submission of plans. The work is not directly taken up by your bureau. Because it has to be dovetailed by the Buildings Department as well as other departments. But can it be expedited because it is very important? In possible improvement of your service. The next one is zero eight four. Is about the Hong Kong Shenzhen um tech technology park. The government said that they will set aside twenty billion dollars for its development. That is the Hong Kong Shenzhen Innovation and Technology Park. However, only seven hundred and ninety billion dollars has been approved in twenty eighteen in May. That is to do with the main works in the in the first phase of the of the River Loop. On site formation and investigation, it's a small percentage of the overall commitment. By the looks of it, in monetary terms, it is moving very slowly. Can it's can they start to deliver a land for for use in twenty twenty one first quarter? Can you give us more information? Two questions. The River Loop will be answered up by the P S. You mentioned about improvement of government service. For under Smart City one point O, there are about seventy items. They we have reported on them when we launched two point O. The bureau is a bureau. But we try to conduct our work in a targeted manner. That includes improvement on government service. Later this year, we will launch um a service. Over a hundred government service will turn to uh. Will be digitalized under I M Smart. The epidemic has highlighted our inadequacies that I admit. But I feel encouraged to know that when there is the tech connect block vote. We have received from seven from thirty departments, over a hundred items. Well, I will give you more information if you are interested in, for the rest, I'll I will defer to the P S. We support other departments and bureaus to uh turn their services to uh electronics. I can give you specific information if you're referring to a particular department, the River Loop. We are working on the advanced work, now that is the content decontamination. At the same time, we are working on detailed design. Gazette of a role works and uh power generation is also underway. We have made arrangements to in the coming few months consult rural committees, district councils. And we will go to the C and I panel. Our work has never stopped. Our goal is still to make available the first batch of land in twenty twenty one. We don't have, we have not earmarked enough funding because it's a huge project. The advanced work is uh for preparation. After we have completed our work, we will go to different panels and the finance committee to. Apply for funding for the the proper work and the first batch of um buildings. Let's hear briefly from Mister Lam. The Buildings Department has already started the tender exercise. Preparation of the system, we have we have to rely on communications with the with the sector as well as other departments. We'll follow up with the Buildings Department to see if there are any applications that can be launched. Before the first quarter of twenty twenty one. If possible, we will uh launch. Certain applications uh as soon as possible, sorry, speaker is off mic, the speaker is off mic. Yes, I heard your view, next Mister Charles Mark. I T companies are in a plight. They are seriously affected by the epidemic and it seems that it's going to last. There are lots of S M Es and startups in the sector. They have the feeling that the government's been supporting them, but they need more. I'd like to talk about esports, half of the companies find it difficult to continue. No matter what um kind of business they are in, they all face the problem of cash flow. There are problems created by the government, say for example, allocation under the uh uh. I uh Innovation and Technology Commission, the various research funds, voucher funds. The uh speed of funding approval has slowed down. Some companies said that um they have built up about seven hundred thousand dollars in debt. You you asked them to go to get a loan from the government to pay off what the government owes owes them? That doesn't make sense, I have previously asked the commissioner, they said that um. Well, they should work at from home and they should should not be affected, is it really the case? And I will also want also ask them when they'll get their money. Science Park, I've been asking for a re for a refund of half of the six month uh rental. They said that in the coming six months, uh they don't have to pay rent, but that is different from getting half of the rent. For the past um six months, they can only get dispersed when they reach a milestone. They still haven't got the money, they're old. I think this is a critical time. Would you please uh be more relaxed? Well, the Science Park has paid seventy five thousand dollars out of their own pocket to these incubates. Perhaps in the new round of support, you need to increase the uh amount of subsidy to the Science Park or the Cyber. Or the Cyberport to help these companies. Starting from now, you said that you don't charge uh rents for tenants in Science Park and incubates. For the coming six months, but what about other companies, that is unfair? Well, trade associations have spoken to me, yesterday I have sent some requests to the I T B. You need to cover all companies by providing them with rent subsidy or uh wage subsidy. Say for example, at a ceiling of eighty percent, not exceeding eighty five thousand dollars, you have to give them something. Well, um there are reports saying that the chief executive is going to announce the package. But it's only limited to uh trades that have been stopped. Esports has been affected. If you're just talking about beauty parlors and and the like, that is far from enough. We should lose no time, otherwise, all the hard work you have put in secretary to support a startup. Although hard work put in by the by the sector will be annihilated.
So can you cover all I T companies? They be should be given a subsidy for their rent and also uh staff salaries, secretary. Very simply, first. Cyberport and the Science Park are two major landlords in I N T sector. So uh they uh will take the lead. Because uh the tenants uh. Uh may be everywhere, so uh it's very difficult to vet their eligibility. So we hope these two corporations can take the lead and we see that other landlords are following, really, yes, yes. But uh that's not far enough. Secondly. Uh for the com uh applications, I think uh the um I N T Commission is really doing that. And they will not take too long, I can see a search in the number of applications. On tech technology voucher scheme is example, in the past, it would be around fifty to sixty cases per month. But now it's um increased to three hundred. The question is, the problem is those who have applied uh for the voucher has yet to receive the subsidy. All right, uh please do not pass it to the uh director. Now, because of the epidemic, many industries are now in uh deep waters, I understand, including the esports sector. But some in industries are harder hit, such as the retail industry. But there are also sectors that have um seen and growth in the business, including uh e-commerce, e-payment. Fintech companies, etc. What we do now is to focus our resources and give more opportunities and take the lead to waive and uh cut rent. And I think the sector is already doing that. That is uh to provide funding earlier now um late. Disbursement of fund is one thing, but I understand that for some projects, we've already advanced the payment. So we will uh try to help the sector by taking these measures. Now, you're responsible for this sector, please do your level best to help this sector. Uh which has benefited from your hard work, otherwise, if um they uh or um. If they uh think now that that is a problem, no, it's um it's not that you haven't done anything, I want you to do more. Yes, uh your view is taken, we will try to do more, Mister Holden Chow, thank you.
I'd like to follow up on a reply one three five. A question asked by uh Miss Doctor Elizabeth Quat. And uh the question is about reindustrialization and policy support for it. Under the government subsidy scheme. Probably in the second quarter of this year, uh the scheme will be launched. And are you going to subsidize uh the enterprises up to fifteen million dollars each?
I think we must attach importance to reindustrialization, many international. Um comments are saying that uh the um. Manufacturing a base or the blueprint will change. So I hope by this uh realignment of manufacturing basis, we can grasp the opportunities. In particular, high value added manufacturing processes should be kept in Hong Kong, I think we have an opportunity ahead. Because of the epidemic, in the second quarter, when you launch the subsidy scheme. Or the funding scheme. I hope you understand that um many enterprises may hesitate at this moment because of the current situation. However. Secretary, have you set any star any targets for the future? Uh for instance. Do you have uh any estimate on the number of enterprises you can attracted? You can attract in the first and second year of implementation? And uh because of the uh epidemic, some enterprises may uh be hesitant. What can you do in order to attract them to uh benefit from your funding scheme? Thank you.
I uh entirely agree with you, Mister Chow. When we have. When our economy um bounce back, we will uh see how we can grasp the opportunities. And this is something we are also thinking about. The P S can fill in the details. As you may know, the um reindustrialization funding scheme is on the queue. To get funding approval from F C P S. In the first half of last year, we briefed or even before we briefed the panel on the scheme. I had met with many trade associations to discuss uh this funding scheme. I've also met many interested manufacturers and investors. So there is a lot of interest out there, but because of the epidemic, uh people may um want to reconsider their future plans. So we have to discuss with them once again, but because of the epidemic, there are new investors. That have approached us. So as soon as funding approval is given by the council. I believe there will still be interested investors. To make use of the fund to set up manufacturing uh lines or uh. Plants in Hong Kong, so they will both be new and old investors. Thank you, we all agree to this direction. After going through the epidemic, there are cries out there that. There will be a re uh alignment of manufacturing bases in the world. So uh perhaps uh with the global networks and organizations you have lined up now in the past. Now, in the past, we might not um be in the position to compete with others, but because of this realignment, I think we should grasp the opportunities. That's all I want to say. Thank you. Doctor Zheng Chong Tai, thank you.
Uh the secretary said that e-sports uh has been haunted. I don't quite understand, because uh people are playing a popular uh uh online game and even a golden shopping mall is very crowded. Now, you you don't really have to respond to this question. The secretary talked about uh Zoom, the use of Zoom, and he said that he has reminded civil servants on uh the use of Zoom. In fact, the uh Defense Ministry of the U K on Taiwan and the New York issued orders yesterday to ban the use of Zoom. How come in Hong Kong, we do not uh see any advice from the Bureau on the use of Zoom by universities and the public? How come you haven't given them any tips in the use of Zoom? So regarding uh security, data security and also data protection, what advice do you have for us?
Mister Victor Lam, thank you. Our computer incident coordination center a few days ago provided useful tips and a reference for a use of video conferencing apps, including Zoom. In particular, when you use a video uh apps in uh the in sharing sensitive information, you uh should uh be cautious and actually should avoid it. You should look at suspicious account activities and uh the uh video um recording should be handled very carefully. Zoom is just among uh it's just one of the apps. Uh there is a range of apps for people to choose from. Of course, internally, we have guidelines. When using video uh apps, you should take care of uh the sensitivity of information involved, data security. And I if it is a confidential uh meeting with sensitive information involved, a video conferencing, uh using such apps should be avoided as far as possible. Well, this is just a reminder. Earlier on, I made a complaint, apps being used by a logistics company has something wrong in its program, and uh the addresses of many vendors were exposed. As a result, I could only make a complaint to the privacy commissioner, and the reply I got was uh the data subjects had to um lodge a complaint separately. There was no follow-up. So uh in terms of public education and administrative measures, I don't think we have a very sound system of ensuring data security. There are commercial buildings and restaurants that have um uh procured uh devices to uh take body temperature. We have one downstairs at the entrance. I'd like to know whether such devices have um uh facial recognition as well. I think two major restaurant chains are using equipment, which is quite likely to uh have this function. While uh they take your body temperature, they can uh use the function of facial recognition. So um whether uh the um data are linked to a server for processing or analyzing is a separate matter. So have you uh ascertained with commercial buildings and uh restaurant chains? Eh is any problem in the use of such device for a thermal um for a taking body temperature and uh with a facial recognition function? Mister Lam, we've not been to individual chain stores to check whether their thermal um taking machines have facial recognition features. But uh the hardware may have different types of functions. Whether they have activated a particular function is a separate issue. Data security is a very important aspect of our promotion. So if these machine uh will infringe the people's privacy, then uh the Hong Kong Computer Emergency Response Team Coordination Center will issue guidelines and will uh alert the public as to how they can protect their own privacy. Mister, Miss Elizabeth Quat.
Well, um in the last half, in the second half of last year, there were riots already told the government that uh many startups I T companies uh were in a plight. And then they uh thought that um come this year, things may improve, but we have the epidemic now and uh the uh whole world or the economy has a ground to halt. There are some I T startups that have been performing quite well, but now they do not have any business, they have no source of income, some already dying and uh some have also uh lay off from many of their staff. So you have to face up to the difficulties faced by I T startups. Please see whether you can have a plan to help them to tide over the difficult period. We have many I N T companies in Hong Kong that have tremendous potential. Now, if they cannot ride out the storm and uh if their staff are gone, then they will be beyond savage after the epidemic is over. So please see how you can uh keep them afloat. And I hope the government can uh take care of different companies, not just those operating in cyber port and science park, because we do have many of them operating elsewhere.
Me like. Well, given the epidemic and uh the likely economic downturn, a lot of people have expectations of the I N T Bureau to make better use of technology to provide better services and create new economic growth points so that we can ride out the storm together. At different times, there are different expectations. Say, in the past few months, um people could not buy masks. Well, if the government could not provide masks themselves, then could they not at least um come come up with a platform to tell the public where and when to buy masks? We still haven't seen that. It looks like the epidemic is here to stay. Masks are more available now and the prices have come down, but still, not everyone can afford it. The government can actually put more thoughts into it and do more. I, together with a smart city alliance and the government, have um well launched a dashboard. It's a pleasant surprise, because the latest information about the epidemic is uh made available. Well, uh the hit rate is very high as well. That is uh the Smart City Consortium with the with the government. So we have come up with something to show the public that they that we have made good use of technology. That's only one example, though. The wristband is received with mixed comments. I hope that the government will urge, I I hope that the Bureau will urge the government to make better use of technology. People talk about the cash payout. We don't understand why it will take so long and why they always have to start from scratch. Yes, it is under the purview of the financial services and and the treasury. But people don't differentiate one bureau from another. With the use of technology, people always criticize the I T B and the Chief Executive. When we hear that registration for the cash payout will start in July, and the last time when the four thousand was given, it was a mess, and that they will have to spend one billion dollars in administrative administrative cost, people are angry. You can't say that uh you want to launch the smart city but use technologies in the Stone Age. Well, can we speed up the development of e-government? Are there any ways to make sure that our elections are fairer? We have to make good use of your time, Miss Quat. Um secretary, your uh reply will have to be brief. We agree more or less with what you said. Technology is only a tool. What's most important is for people to embrace it, to embrace the success as well as the failure. There is no single technology that is a panacea to all problems. People often don't understand. We have to take the good with the bad. Well, obviously, one drawback may be privacy. We have to forge consensus and be tolerant in the uh use of technology. Next, Mister Ray Chan.
When I have been hearing the uh secretary saying that innovation and technology is important, it's equally important for people to embrace it. Well, uh the um Minister for Technology in Taiwan, Tang Feng, has shown us that uh they have done really well in the use of technology and is highly praised by overseas countries as well. Can I hear from the secretary if they have drawn reference from other places to learn from them? I would like to ask about a wristband under zero zero four. Starting from the mandatory quarantine order, how many different types of smart wristbands have been used, including the Q R code ones? I see in the paper that altogether, they have arranged one thousand and sixty-five electronic wristbands as at the beginning of March. Are they the latest generation of response? Today is the eighth of April, another month's lapse. Has there been any changes to the number of response? You might have answered that this is not paid under uh the estimate, but the anti epidemic fund. So I'd like to know the cost of the wristbands. And I want to ask whether it is easily removed. It says in the reply that, well, the design is that it is not easy to remove, but it looks like you can easily slide it off. This is not satisfactory. So in a in actual operation, has any wristband been removed or taken off? Well, you you said that you use an app to monitor the uh wristband. But what about uh some people, say mainlanders, they don't have Google Pay on that app? Can they choose not to use a wristband in and choose WhatsApp or WeChat real-time uh G P S location? And you said that um there is a quarantine control center and they would ask the police to uh conduct um surprise check. Please give me more information. You continue to say that there will be improvements. Does it mean that there will be newer generation of response as well?
Yes, we have drawn reference from other places, but we have to balance the feasibility as well. As I said, that privacy is one thing. We will not adopt something that undermines privacy. For wristbands, I would defer to Mister Lam. Well, including Q R code wristband, there are altogether five response, five types. The earliest are bulkier and they rarely use a saving accept uh on a land border. The other types are still in use at other places. The amount we have produced for Q R code, forty-one thousand. Q R code wristbands are no longer in use because, starting from the thirty-first of March, we have changed to use electronic wristbands. We have produced thirteen thousand or so to be used at the airport. There are also three thousand wristbands used at other land border control points. Cost. For electronic wristbands, there are two types. Usable ones and otherwise. For use reusable ones, it costs about three hundred to four hundred. For disposable ones is sixty to eighty dollars. They are disposable ones. Q R code wristbands cost less than one dollar. As to whether um they can be easily removed. If it is an electronic wristband, if it is removed, the computer system will be alerted and there will be follow-up. We can see that uh the electronic wristband is removed or cut. Then we will alert the Department of Health and Law Enforcement Agency. We may also call the person involved to see if they can show whether the wristband it has come off or not. Some mainlanders may have may not have Google Play. If they enter Hong Kong via the airport, and if they don't have Google Play, then we use A P K. They can install A P K on their phones. Once it's installed, it can, they can immediately activate the mobile app. If they don't even have A P K, we will give them a device and put the wristband on them. They can take that uh smart device with them, plug it in, and then they will know, then then we will know whether there are irregularities or the person has left their home. Mister Wilson Oh. In the last paragraph of the secretary, it says that uh given the difficult epidemic, we hope to um work together with the I N T sector to make use of local technologies to contribute to the epidemic fight, and they want us to give them comments. I heard your report about the work of your bureau. To be honest, you have done a lot of work. Making good use of innovate of uh technology is uh well received. You have been, you have asked for a large sum in funding. However, we can, we still have yet to feel the benefit. Some members talk about wristbands. Earlier on, there were lots of complaints. I still, I have yet to see different departments making good use of techno- uh technology. Well, the four thousand did not use much technology. I don't know if the ten thousand will uh put that to good use. You sound like you've been wronged. But how can you make the public feel that the Bureau That the bureau has done something good to them. I would like to ask about fast payment system. You need to let people know that they have done anything to benefit them. So in relation to apps to fight the epidemic. We rely on civic societies to provide support and to. Provide assistance. We have not seen anything, any contribution from the bureau. People do have expectations. People can remember smart lampposts. Regrettably, they are not well received. Now you talk about smart city. It looks like that it is not moving ahead at all. We'd like to encourage you instead of criticizing you. How can you encourage your colleagues to talk to different stakeholders? Whether they are from the Let's Go, from different sectors, or from the district, from district bodies. When people ask me what the I T B does, well, I can't really say much. I'm not, I don't know much about it. I think you need to do more publicity. You not, you need to put yourself in people's shoes. Your estimate is quite high. People do feel unhappy. I'll, I'll give, I'll give you some time to tell me how. You can promote good use of information and technology by departments. You can't, you can't easily fill in a form online for government departments.
Mister Young, thank you for your comments, Mister O. Let me explain to you. Now, if, if anything unclear, you can contact us at any time and we're more than happy to explain to you. No, it doesn't matter whether you explain it to me or not. The most important thing is for the public to know. That you can help. Now, I'm trying, I'm coming to your question. Now for smart lamppost, we've set up an independent committee and the report is already published. We have not stopped our liaison with the Kunrong District Council. Please don't say such things. And for lamppost two points, two point zero. Now, we have explained what Smart City one point five has achieved. And as for home quarantine, I agree that some of the apps could not be properly installed. But it's set by the P S. Our technology basically can work. It's just that we have room for improvement in other arrangements. Wall Street has recently published a video and you can see. How different places are using different innovation and technology to fight the epidemic. And we are doing that as well. Hong Kong being such a big city. Now, we have achieved such success because of the hard work of the I T Commission. As well as the cooperation of the public. I hope this can be sustained so that we can. Fight the epidemic together. And our target is to provide high-quality jobs for our future young people. Cyberport and Science Park offer together twenty thousand positions. That is far from sufficient. Now, with the Long March Loop and also expansion of the Science Park. We hope to bring fifty thousand, even more quality jobs, so that our young people can see hope. And this is our pledge. But you must give us time because it takes time for these to be achieved. And we should keep in contact, maintain communication. Now, if we are not doing enough in a certain area, do let us know and we can explain to you the reasons. And we hope Mister O can help us to hammer home this message. You can criticize our shortcomings. And if we've done anything well, please help us to spread the message. Mister Wu Chi Wei, thank you. The secretary likes to talk about collaboration between the government, the business and the academic sectors. Before we can scale new heights in I N T. Now, in this epidemic, we can see a lot used to be desired in this collaboration. With very short period of time, the Hong Kong U S D and the Polytechnic U. Developed a fast test kit that was taken up by Shenzhen and Hong Kong U S D. The test kits are being produced in massive scale in Shenzhen for exploitation. In parent six of your opening remarks, secretary said that you have four major areas. And fourth is to set up an R and D platform. Seven is to. Set up I N T hub in the Guangdong, Hong Kong, Macau, G B A. But I can't see how with R and D, we can set up our industry platform. And I don't know what you can do, secretary, though I have a few suggestions for you. Now, you have land reserve in Liantang and also the Long March Loop. You have more than hectares of land reserve in these areas. But it's not easy to attract investors. And we need talents in order to achieve things. I once suggested that some of our R and D teams. In our local universities in particular should be stationed there. And these R and D teams should assist the I T Bureau. To manage the land there and find their own partners. Because currently, the government, the business, the academia. And also the research sectors are very fragmented. And collaboration is not really desirable or satisfactory. We should now just hand over the R and D outcome to other parties for manufacturing. I hope that the fruits of R and D can lead to production in Hong Kong. In particular, in the current outbreak, we can see that we have excellent R and D teams. That can develop test kits and reagents and drugs. Now, if the production takes place outside Hong Kong. That would limit our room for development because. We need a top-notch talent in R and D, but. Our young people. May involve a wide spectrum of skills and they may be suited to different positions. So, secretary. Whether it be in Long March Loop or the Science Park in Liantang, are you willing to? Take on board my suggestion. Let our universities be the core. They have their R and D base. And then they should have to set up production chains. So that we have the industries there. It's just like the Polytechnic U. They have hotel faculty and then they have also got a hotel next to the university managed. By the university itself. Thank you, Mister Wu. We do communicate from time to time. Thank you very much for your suggestions. First, I'd like to point out one fact. Most of the R and D funding has come from the government. This is rather strange. Because in other countries, R and D is mainly private sector funded. I agree with you that we need our own production capacity. So among the seven areas of work I'm going to focus on. In number five, I said very clearly that we should launch the reindustrialization funding scheme. And the focus is a microelectronics center. Reindustrialization is based on I P rights. Now with I P rights, it doesn't matter where the production takes place. Of course, if it can be in Hong Kong, the best. And Mister Wu, you're correct. We will for sure work along this line. Through reindustrialization, we will revive Hong Kong's reputation. As a manufacturing base. And as for the test kits or test reagents, I will defer to the P S because it's quite complicated. Yes. First, collaboration between the business, the commercial, the academic and research sectors. I'll take the electronic wristband used in quarantine as example. It is a classic example of collaboration among the four sectors. The, we have collaborated with a local university and also a startup in Hong Kong that developed the apps. And L S C M was responsible for fabricating the hardware. So the team burned their midnight oil with limitation, with constraints in supplies and raw materials. When supply was suspended, we came up with those response. And as for test regions. We've communicated with the two universities very early on to try out their test regions. To see how feasible they are. Because they are still just R and D from the laboratories. They have yet to obtain certification or approval. So we have to go through a trial period. So we're trying out their R and D outcome. Thank you. Mister Kenneth Long, two questions. First, about two years ago. The Inner Revenue Amendment Bill number seven was passed. On a super deduction for R and D expenses. It's been two and a half years and Chairman, I think you were a member of the Bill's Committee as well. The secretary promised to. Review the effectiveness of the amendment ordinance. Well, they will have to see whether the conditions are too stringent. So it's been one and two years. So when it comes to super deduction for R and D expenses. Can you tell us how effective the amendment ordinance has been? And the second question is related to the current epidemic. Many accountants and professionals. Cannot be physically present at the client's office. To carry out professional duties, including orders and verification. I understand that many. I N T companies can use blockchain technology. For application. The problem is, there is a missing link there. So a product has come out from I N T. But the professionals are not given any assistance to use such apps. The connection is missing. I'd like to ask whether the bureau can act as an intermediary. To link up the two for companies that can use such technology. They've been able to continue their business. For those without the information or expertise, they can do nothing. So two questions, secretary. Mister Young, I defer to the P S because she is very close to the execution aspect. And secondly, I fully understand what you're talking about. Our major success lies in fintech. We are quite fast in the development of fintech. And as for professional services, perhaps this is a bit more difficult, but we are doing our best. You need to embrace technology. Now, for people who don't accept the use of electronics, it's hard for us to help. And that doesn't mean that we are not promoting such apps. Cyberport is going to promote reg tech, regulation technology. And the application will not be confined to finance. And we will also promote law tech, law technology. So. These will be our major directions forward, hoping that we can achieve something here. For R and D, can you please be more specific? Thank you.
Relation to the super deduction, that was the end of twenty eighteen when it was enacted. When it was passed. It applies to the tax year twenty eighteen nineteen. As you know, that you, R and D can't take place overnight. It depends on the subject, on the research. It was the second of the, second half of the year when the bill was passed. So we expected not many applications. How much? A hundred or so, under a hundred and ten, under a hundred and three applications. As I said, well, it was in the second half of the year when the bill was passed. Regarding tax concessions, we have to. We, we have to look at the longer period of time, especially regarding R and D. Will you remove more barriers by offering more concessions? We have had discussions in the Bills Committee. We have compared tax concessions. Between Hong Kong and the number of tax jurisdictions and found that Hong Kong was indeed a superior. Because there is no ceiling. It's just that it applies to only half of the year. And then subsequently, there were social incidents as well as the epidemic. External trade has always had a bearing on it. And we have to look at, look at a longer time span. We will continue to, to consider possible measures. Let me add that at that time, we, we did consider there was still room. I'd like to follow up on two oh oh in relation to coverage of Wi-Fi. The reply from the administration said that they have exceeded the target set in. Back in twenty sixteen, that is thirty-six thousand eight hundred. Well, people will have to know where they are. And it says that they have set aside forty-three point five million dollars for promotion. For these publicity and publicity and public education, where? Hong Kong or overseas? You said that you will work with the Tourism. The Travel Industry Council. So what is the apportionment of funding? And one oh nine, the third point in relation to. in relation to um uh technology application by the trade in the Science Park. It involves tourism and hotel industry. I understand that they involve sizable companies making a proposal and then you will cooperate with them. Who makes the, who makes the suggestion? The user? User company will uh talk to the government? Is there a ceiling? And who is responsible for it? How do you publicize it? Just two questions to start with. For the first part, Wi-Fi, I would like to defer to the uh O G C I, the G C I O, Mister Lam. Publicity, well, we're building a brand, is called uh Wi-Fi point H, Wi-Fi dot H K. We have to register the name. In the past year, for these Wi-Fi hotspots, the, the speed and the connections are quite good. So the public have accepted it. It's now down to publicity. We make use of different ways, say, online uh promotion. Another important thing is to make use, to involve all um more private companies to use the brand. Currently, the number stands at thirty-six thousand. We would promote to uh, we will promote to more enterprises so that they will use it. We have been talking to the uh um the Tourism Board. Well, they don't wait till they get to Hong Kong to install the app. It would have been installed when they're still overseas. And once they land in Hong Kong, they'll be able to find the Wi-Fi hotspot. If overseas visitors can immediately use our free Wi-Fi, I'm sure that more people will use our brand. What about the forty-three million dollars? Where is it used? You mean the publicity? Yes, on what? The forty-three million dollars is not just used on uh publicity. It's in relation to the twenty twenty one, twenty and twenty-one. Uh not all forty-three million dollars is to be spent on publicity. Then what is it used for? You have to buy the Wi-Fi connection, so that's a cost included. For government venues, we have to increase coverage. It's not just publicity, the second part, the second question. P S. For the application. Well, uh it is the Science Park that executes it. They'll see what they need and then there will be matching. Incubates in the park will know, say, this time round and there are hotels and tourism industries that would like to make use of technologies. Then there will be presentation. Well, for the uh tourism and hotel industry, in view of in view of the epidemic, a lot of hotels have used um robotic servers to deliver meals. Well, hotels might have guessed, might have guessed so that are under quarantine, they can make use of these robotics to re- to reduce contact. So is it the case that not everyone can go and apply? It is a matching scheme. It's not a matter of application. The trade may not know what new technologies are available. And startups have no way to contact the trade, say hotels. The Science Park will make arrangements to identify startups so that the trade will be able to identify suitable technologies and for startups to get the business, Miss Priscilla Lam. The secretary is here. I'd like to ask two questions. Well, for uh social science, well, there are twenty-four scientists making use of water in their research when they want to um transport water from the north to the south. They'd like to make use of technology when they teach humanities subjects to arouse the interest of students. Say, for example, for the History Museum, we don't have something like that. Can you help us? Well, uh humanities faculties encounter a lot of difficulties. A lot of Hong Kong students know, have an incomplete knowledge of uh our history. Some of them challenge the one country, two systems. History is boring if we have a four-D history museum. Perhaps from the Sino-British um negotiations all the way to uh the, to the basic law, there will be information available. I think you need to marry technology with history. I have some ideas. Even if you succeed in one part of it, I'm sure there will be a breakthrough. Well, this is also humanities, uh the law. As you know that uh all courts have stopped working. Lawyers ask for assistance. What concerns me is a delay in justice is deprivation of justice for mainland and the U S. Technology support is a far cry from Hong Kong. I have been to different states in the U S. I have asked lawyer friends and judge, judges' friends of mine in the U S. Well, they will stop at jury trial. There is technology to hear evidence. Well, mainland, maybe they can uh in what, in some way do it. And everything is broadcast. There aren't many uh courts and law court buildings in Hong Kong. Can the I T B provide the technology? Well, you can't ask those who practice law to come up with brilliant ideas in technology. You can talk to the Department of Justice and talk to the judiciary. Humanities subjects do need technology to reach a breakthrough, whether it is teaching, history and trials. I do expect you to give us some help. We know very little about technology. Please help us. I'd like to hear from the secretary. Well, for technology coordination, we would like to introduce technology to different departments. We can only encourage thirty out of eighty departments to use a hundred um or so different uh applications. In the first phase, there, there was five hundred million dollars. Now we have a second phase. It is under the leadership of the Chief Executive in um the Steering Committee. We work very hard, I heard you. And I, I'll see, uh well, how we can help. Maybe I will ask the political assistants to talk to you. Let's hear from Mister Lam. The judiciary has already announced some directions to use um uh video conferencing, conferencing to conduct a trial on the sixth of April. They have, they have conducted a hearing on um matrimonial case. The councils on both sides are very positive in the feedback, uh in the results. And one of them said that they would be happy to share their experience. I think this is a good point to expand the use of technology to other civil cases. And I can work together with the judiciary to work it out.
Um Mister Charles Mork has pressed the button for a long time, so I will give him three minutes. I'll be very quick, just um uh comment for you, you don't have to respond really. Recently, many civil servants have said that they are very disappointed with the work-from-home arrangement because many departments can't redo it and many of them can only get their token uh this week for them to access their department's email. Perhaps this is um the problem with individual departments. But I hope the I T B can assist different departments to uh, to acquire more funding. Uh because the current situation uh may um continue and then there may an other um uh situation. And for O G O, I think there are only three private companies that have successfully get the um super deductions. They're saying that universities and uh public organizations have the dominant share of business. As a result, there is not a lot of incentive for them to engage in um uh R and D, so to uh increase the G D B from the, the amount of um R and D expenditure from a zero point seven five for G D B to one point five, it seems very hard to achieve. I don't think there is time for the administration to respond. I hope the secretary and other P S have noted that uh suggestion for consideration. Well, we'll take a short break of five minutes and we'll start again at three fifty-five.